Good evening. We're gonna start tonight with a public hearing on the discussion of ordinance 541, which is an ordinance to adopt uses and conditions in the historic district of the town of Hampstead. Ordinance 541 will likely be passed later on tonight. Basically, it changes some of the different uses that are allowed within our historic district, which is typically all along Main Street, one block off in places, and around through the high school property, the former high school property as well. So, I don't see very many people in attendance. Is there any conversation up here?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
As we looked at the intent of the historic district, the intents to foster civil pride, you know, in the history and accomplishments of Hampstead, and to maintain our sense of place and strengthen the economy of the town. So, when we looked at how it was written and suggested that we removed or added, that's exactly what we wanted to do, promote the better utilization of buildings currently in the historic district zoning and ones that may be rezoned in the future. We have an amendment also from what we introduced last month that I guess I can talk about later. But, that was the purpose, and we also removed the connection to the business local. A lot of our codes, like the historic code says, "Any permitted or conditional use in business local could be requested as a conditional use in historic." A lot of those uses are outdated. Business local needs to be updated, but we also wanted to be more specific, but we are recommending removing that. So, that way, if we update business local in the future, it won't alter the text in historic, like historic will stay as-is. But, a lot of the uses that are beneficial in these buildings, we kept or added to historic. And right now, the properties that are zoned historic is the mill on Gil Avenue. So, I think this would allow a lot more uses in that building. And there's many properties on Main Street. We have the Old School and the town's adjacent 1.5 acre next to it. We have Saint John's Church, Saint Mark's Church, and 1336 North Main Street where Vicki's Hair Care is located.
Train station.
Oh, sorry, the train station, yes, I forgot that one. The train station.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing and go to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we summon ourselves to you as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who've placed their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead. O Lord, bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Tammy, roll.
Mayor Nevin.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Barrett.
Here.
Councilwoman Painter.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Unglesby.
Here.
And Councilman Zelman is absent.
He is currently in, serving our country in the Navy, someplace in Mississippi. So, I'm guessing he's on the golf, hopefully. All right, minute approvals for the public hearing on June 8th and the council meeting minutes on June 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Town managers report, and we still doing a Main Street revitalization update?
One more time.
One more time? Last one? Not yet?
Well, I probably, it's not, the road hasn't been transferred to us yet, so there's still things we're working, working through. As I mentioned last month, we did a semifinal inspection. State Highway accepted the semifinal inspection punch list that was submitted to them on May 28th, which was the day after the walkthrough. But however, they're disputing one item. State Highway disagrees that the thermoplastic paving markers north of 482, well, actually, I think it's from Shiloh to north of 42, which were damaged by the State Highway plowing last winter. They're disputing that they need to be replaced, so we're still discussing that item. CJ Miller has corrected the other punch list items except for a couple sidewalk ADA compliance issues that need to be remedied. Two new matters were brought to State Highway's attention concerning issues caused by the off conveyance of stormwater from our new Main Street stormwater system. So, the town and State Highway are still discussing these matters. As stated in past staff reports, State Highway requested its town sign the maintenance agreement for the two traffic signals that'll be transferred to the town when the road's transferred. To address the concerns about signing the document now before the town takes ownership of these two signals, I requested that the MOU be amended to state that it will become affected, effective after the road transfers executed. Because if we signed it as-is, it would take effect the day we signed it. So, we didn't want to do that. And we moved ahead with purchasing insurance coverage for the lamppost. We got a quote, I think it was like $240 a year to cover our 98 lampposts along Main Street, so...
The ones that were never gonna be damaged and never replaced?
Well, so far, the ones that have been damaged, they've been damaged by a vehicle, so we go to their car, car insurance to cover the damage. But just in case something were to happen, that's not covered by someone's vehicle insurance. See, well, it's been three so far. So, with our water main replacement project, Mid-Atlantic continues to work on the replacement of the remainder of the 1936 water mains. This week, crews are laying asphalt on West Street and Reineman Avenue where new water lines and service connections have been installed. I believe they finished up today. When it's completed, they'll move to Ralph Avenue. They intend to begin the water main replacement work on Lower Beckleyville Road in August, which was a separate bid. Our commercial and residential projects are still moving forward. We continue to have discussions with developers and county staff involving our various projects. Next month, Chesapeake Real Estate Group, LLC, is scheduled to go to settlement on the purchase of the North Carroll High School property. They've already begun the process of transferring the property, transforming the property into multi-sport complex by submitting grading-only plans to the county for the installation of two turf fields and four grass fields. After county approval, the plan will be submitted to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. In the meantime, the theatrical group Players on Air Incorporated are rehearsing in the North Carroll High School auditorium for their two upcoming summer productions. You can purchase tickets on their website, playersonairinc.wixite.com. And Carroll County Economic Development continues to work with a business prospect that's interested in one of the parcels within the North Carroll Business Park. And then another parcel, they're still working on the stormwater management to make the parcel more marketable. PennTex Ventures began the demolition of the property at 8:32 Main Street, but it's been temporarily delayed. An old well was found in the basement. We always say that's so Hampstead, but it needs to be properly abandoned before they can continue with the demolition. Currently, they're waiting on approval from the county for their building permit, and the county needs to sign a MyLars. They hope to begin construction on New Dollar General prior to next month's council meeting. They were hoping to have it finished by October. That's probably a little aggressive, but they're hoping to have everything finished by then. Rental housing license renewals for 2019 to 2021, license period will be mailed out soon. There are currently 320 rental properties within the incorporated town limits. The current licenses will expire on August 31st, so new licenses will need to be obtained by that date. And we're, we were discussing actually tonight, Jim and I, about maybe attaching code to the application when we send them out, to send it to the landlords, that the sections of the code apply, that apply to rental units. For all the financing town, Cheryl's working on FY21 year-end closeout and the financial audit. She's also entering all the new information for FY22. So, she had to enter all the new budget numbers and salaries and everything, leave balances today, or this week, she's been working on it. Our paving patching FY21-05 bid was awarded to CJ Miller last month during the council meeting. They're currently applying the pavement markings on the portions of the newly paved Soul of an Alley, Farmwoods Lane, Gil Avenue, and Boxwood, or Boxwood Drive, which will complete the project. I think, again, they might have finished that up today. Bulk trash pickup is scheduled for Saturday, July 17th, for residents living within the town limits of Hampstead, so this, this Saturday. And the Town Office Administrative Position was offered to Christina Swisher. Ms. Christina plans to begin work next month, August 2nd. So, the phones have been ringing nonstop, so we'll be very happy to see her.
And it's also water bill payment time.
Yeah.
So, do the Players, are they gonna advertise on like the Northern News? Do they have an idea? I talked to some of them at the Farmer's Market. They weren't necessarily local, but...
Right, well, it's...
Do they have, you know...
The dates, if you go to their website, the one date is for Jesus Christ Superstar, and it is...
Weekend of the 23rd.
It's like 20, that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they have dates of July 23rd, 24th, 25th, and then the beginning of August, it's...
Some kind of comedy.
It's a comedy show. I just, I just read it.
And it's, okay, first weekend in August, last weekend in July.
And then they have another one they're not rehearsing for yet in October. So, it's exciting. It'll be a nice addition to town.
Hopefully, people show up. Yes. Any questions for Tammy? All right, Oversight's Diane.
Farmer's Market, attendance is holding steady at about 1,000 customers each week. Now that summer is officially here and the summer heat is officially here, locally grown fruits and vegetables are plentiful. So, come on out to the Farmer's Market, get all your produce there. Before you go to the grocery store, you will not be disappointed. One new vendor has joined the market, this one, which sells homemade salsa and chips. We continue to receive many positive comments about the new location and ease of parking. On July 17th and 31st, the market needs a few volunteers at noon to help take down the canopy tents in the seating areas and bring the tents, tables, and chairs from the seating areas to the market house for storage. I need to attend family obligations on those days, so just looking for a few helpers to sub in for me. It only takes about 15, 20 minutes, so if you're available, you can message the Hampstead Farmer's Market Facebook page, or just come out to the market house shortly before noon on those days, and Keith or Wayne can show you where you can help out. That's it.
Great. Yeah, I've been there. It's been very well attended, and the veggies, the fruits, the steaks, the cookies, pretzels.
Yep.
It's all good. All right, Wayne.
Hampstead Train Station Committee held their second Music in the Park this past Saturday, and we had bootleg there. I think there was probably about 200 people there. It was really good. We got, we sold a lot of popcorn, got a lot of donations. So, we're looking forward to the next one, which is gonna be on August 14th. It's gonna be music by Just Us, and we're hoping we get just as many people to turn out. The Tree Commission, next month I'll be coming in with reappointment of some members. We need a volunteer to fill one position, so if anybody out there wants to join the Tree Commission, please contact Town Hall or contact myself. That's it.
All right, Deb.
Planning and Zoning Commission met on June 30th and approved a sign, a new sign, for True Value Hardware, which is the same size as the old one, but it's internally lit, and it's, it looks much nicer, newer.
And works.
And works. Also, approval of the sign for BB&amp;T, which is changing its name to Truist, which will be the sign, the BB&amp;T sign will be covered in September and October with the BB&amp;T logo, and then a national unveiling in February of 2022. And the Commission discussed the Chapter 5 of the 2020 Hampstead Comprehensive Plan Update, which is growth management and land use.
Exciting. Thanks.
I know, right?
Yeah.
It was.
Dave.
Well, I'm gonna read the water report, and then I just have a couple little things to go over. Water, June 2021, average water usage was 350,000 gallons per day. July 2021, average water usage so far is 336,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for June 2021 was 5.4 inches. Rainfall total so far for July 2021 is 1.8. As you guys might know, Tammy, you just talked about how the Dean's Restaurant, the old Dean's, was torn down. PennTex did let me go in and take out some historic items, one of which was the old candy counter, that, which was down in the old drugstore, I believe, correct?
Is that...
Yeah. On Main Street. And I wasn't able to get the whole thing out, because a lot of it had gotten water damage and smoke damage, and it was very heavy. But I did, I saw, saw a good chunk of it out and carried it out of the restaurant. Now, I was, like I said, basically, I got the cabinet section is what I wanted to get. Raver Cabinets has decided that they're gonna help me get that restored, back to its original glory. He said he used to get candy down in the store when he was a little kid, so he was very happy to see that that was saved.
Cool.
So, I thank him for his help with that. As far as the parks go, basically, I wanna thank Wayne there for allowing us to put up the plat of what we're gonna do at the Music in the Park, and we had the plat, thanks to Christie there, at the Hampstead Day, so...
There's a lot of good feedback Saturday night.
Yeah, there was.
There was a lot of good feedback Hampstead Day, too. I mean, people were just generally excited.
Yes, it was. So, I think it's gonna be a good, a good situation.
What's the date for that? To start that?
Right now, we were talking, is that correct, January-ish, or...
We're gonna make the Music in the Park be done in...
Right.
Santa Claus coming to town.
The Christmas activity is first.
So, it started as a...
So, we don't have pictures to show you for the, for those viewing us from TV, but basically,
our shelter slash manger slash not really a bandstand at Moore Memorial Park will be converted into something that's much more modern, more functional, and actually promotes good sound.
Right.
And the area around it will also be decorated. We got, thanks to the grant writing abilities of Christie and others, we got a very good grant from the state on that, which is gonna defray most of the cost.
Yay, Christie.
Yeah, well done.
That's it?
Good, thank you. Chief?
Good evening, everyone.
Did your microphone hold it on?
I believe it's on.
It sounds good.
I apologize. During the month of June, with reference to traffic safety, we investigated 10 traffic accidents. Three were reportable, one unfortunately was fatal and is still under investigation, and seven, or I'm sorry, six were minor property damage only. Three of the crashes took place at 42 Traffic Circle. We spent the, we displayed the speed signs at seven locations for a total of 58 days of display. We took 60 selective enforcements over a 21-hour period. 13 citations and 33 warnings were issued during that activity. Overall, traffic enforcement included 66 citations and 81 warnings. 457 property checks were made of businesses and schools. With reference to serious crime, two thefts were reported, both are still being investigated. We took one adult into custody for traffic violations, and there were three DUI arrests. Although it's not in your sheet, I'll put it out there, since it's out there. We had a reported robbery on Saturday night. Three individuals have been identified, two have been taken into custody, they were arrested yesterday, and we actually conducted a search warrant relative to that as well and recovered property. That's still a continuing investigation, but there is no public safety concern or anything of that nature. It's all known parties. In the training category, we conducted 81 and a half hours of training. Some of the topics included cannabis impairment detection workshop. We conducted an internal class on entry tool training. What that refers to is Matt Schifflett, how to project, where he put together a series of tools that we carry actually in all of our cars now. The training applies to that. Basically, it's tools that we can use when we have a need to gain entry into a house, a car, whatever, in a rapid manner, and now we don't have to wait around for the fire department, when time is of the essence. He has some training and expertise in that, and he was able to share that with the rest of the guys. The Lieutenant and I participated in the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association Executive Overview Training on the Police Reform Legislation. There's a lot going on that, in that category, and collectively, all the chiefs in the state are trying to figure the whole thing out. There's a, there's a lack of guidance that came along with this package, and we're trying to hash it out as we go along. We conducted training on fair and impartial policing, evidence collection, control, and storage. And the last thing noted there, a de-escalation for, specifically for combat, fed, transit, and crisis. We were invited to participate in a pilot program that was run by the University of Tennessee. They held it down at the Academy in Sykesville. Officers Schifflett and Bachman attended that. It was a very interesting program. I think it was very beneficial for us as well. Community events, we attended the Fields HOA meeting, participated in the Tire Community Car Show, or I'm sorry, the Matthews Tire Community Car Show. I did not, in all fairness, vote on the cars, because I'm not a car guy. I wasn't really sure I was voting on, but Matt Schifflett, who has some expertise, and Lee the Mayor, had took an opportunity to vote as well.
I do every year.
We also participated in some of the lead-up to the Fire Department's Carnival for this year, as far as the planning that goes into that. And the Lieutenant also was able to participate in the last food truck Tuesday that took place. Last thing I'll add in here real quick, it's not on your list, but Officer Thorne has announced his retirement, his last, actually, it'll be effective August 1st, so his last day will be the 20th of this year. That's all I have.
Questions for Chief? Thank you. My comments revolve around the MML Summer Conference, which most of us up here attended at the end of June. It was good to actually be back in person down in Ocean City. It was, it was neat this year for two reasons. Well, one of which, I'm gonna be on the board as a result of being a district vice president, and then I got elected to the executive committee from the other district vice presidents, but Dave ran at large over here, and he got himself on the board as well, so we'll have two representatives from Hampstead on the board. I think College Park's the only other one that has two, so, well done.
Thank you.
The neat thing is, bright and early Monday morning, one of the first things they do is they give out awards, and this year, we were award winner, MML Achievement Award winner for the medium-sized towns, which is a population of 3,000 to 10,000, excuse me. And the, we submitted basically our Main Street revitalization project, and this year's theme for MML was working together to get things done, collaborative programs and policies. And if Main Street doesn't exemplify that, I don't know what does. And I just wanna, you know, thank all the people that were involved in our Main Street and the fact that we won this award. We can start with the governor for funding it, the state senators and delegates for keeping it on point down in Annapolis, the county commissioners for all their help. There was some joint things done between the sewer system and the water system, the county owns the sewer system. The town staff here did an amazing job. You know, at one point, there were monthly meetings, and there was a lot going on, and I sort of told Tammy, maybe they should have weekly meetings, much more smaller group, but that's what they did. Every single Monday, they got together and talked about what they did last week and what was coming in the next. And the town staff did a great job of keeping Facebook up to date and informing everybody of the work that was going on, all the people in the Town Council for their backing over the years. We had McCormick and Taylor Engineers, you had Mid-Atlantic Utilities who did our waterline. They were our waterline contractor, WCBM Engineers, the State Highway Administration, the District 7 staff, and it's amazing how much of that District 7 staff, when we first started out, at least you and me, Wayne, back in the day with the bypass, that are now, you know, they were the everyday guys that were now the management people. CJ Miller, you know, they just did an amazing job and adopted that, adopted that project, and we've been very complimentary of the work they did, and they really did a great job. Flora and Teeter, I think Landscape Architects, right? And then BG&E, Verizon Comcast, and then all the local businesses and volunteers. The local businesses really adopted a can do, we're gonna make this, we're gonna turn lemons into lemonade, and really had a positive attitude, which made a big difference. And as a result, we have a project for which we can all be proud of, and it gets recognized statewide. So, I think the last time the town got recognized, I asked for the council meeting, and we dug out through our notes, we actually won an award, and they're listed over there, but it was a bigger plaque in 2000. We actually won an award for our waterworks program, which was when we basically figured out that we needed to upgrade our water system to something that was deserving of the 21st century. So, it was an easy, relatively easy lift, but it's given us guidance from that point to today of everything that we've needed to do. So, it's good that we get this recognition every once, every once in a while, and a lot of people here made it happen, so my thanks to you, and Christie, and Jim, and Chief, and everybody sitting up here for everything that they did.
I don't know if I told you that State Highway personnel outside of the monthly meetings, whenever there was a meeting where we had to look at something in the field or have an additional meeting, they always wanted to have it around 11 o'clock, so they could go to outlaw after, because they're traveling from all over the state.
They did like our food, and we treated them well here, too, when we had our, when you had your morning meetings.
Yeah, they were disappointed with COVID, because they didn't get cookies anymore.
So, I don't think there's any unfinished business. Under new business, we have some appointment, an appointment to make with Tracy McCoy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Her term was up in May, and want to reappoint her to another three-year term in, to May of 2024.
Sure.
Second?
Any discussion of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then, I do have some ideas for filling in the hole that's left in planning and zoning, and ethics commissions, and maybe moving some chairs around, which we'll do in maybe August or September. So, I think we have a couple of good candidates, so we'll get some, maybe some fresh eyes on some different projects. All right, we'll do, I guess we'll do some more boring mundane stuff before we get to the fun. Introduction of the rezoning petition for Chesapeake Real Estate Group, LLC. There's a portion of the site that's gonna be Zoned BG in the front. I think you all have a map. Today is just an introduction of that rezoning petition, and then next month, there would be a public hearing on that rezoning petition, and then you could possibly, depending on how the county wants to review this plan, they would, we could have a, you could make a motion to adopt that rezoning plan at that point in time, but it'll either be in August or September. But you can see in red, I don't know if the TV camera's gonna pick it up, but basically, along Front 482, there would be the opportunity for some business general development, retail pads, hotel, that kind of thing, that would front 482 and complement the potential future uses as a sports complex. And I think, you know, it's on a front, it's on a state highway, we've already got access road with Panther Drive. I don't think there would be any curb cuts on the 482. All the access would be off of Panther Drive. So, is there a motion to introduce that rezoning?
I'll make a motion then.
Thanks.
Second?
Second by Deb. Any comments?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I'm not paying attention, so...
Dave and Deb.
Yeah, no, I have that. So, well, I have a question for procedure, for Wayne. We have a suggestion for an amendment. Do I wait for when we're approving it, or can we introduce it as amended?
You can't amend anything.
Until after, till next month, okay.
Until after it's introduced.
Never mind, then.
And you can't amend it at the meeting where it's introduced.
Got it.
Unless it's an emergency.
No, no, we can talk about it next month then. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, that's done. As Tammy said, you know, hopefully, middle, middle August, Chesapeake Real Estate Group will take ownership of that property. I don't know if it's gonna be, is it gonna be in Chesapeake Real Estate Group, LLC, or it's gonna be in a single propensity, but we look forward to that happening, and there's been a lot of good activity at the former high school site, and, yeah, it's just great to see. I know I stopped in one day at J&amp;P sometime, the week before Memorial Day, I think the Monday after or something, I was working here, and I asked them how it was going, and they said they had an absolutely crazy weekend, and I'm like, why? And it was because they had a dance competition at the high school in the auditorium, and so everybody needed someplace to eat, so that's exactly what we want to see happen. All right, little bit of fun. So, Braxton Galy is in the, in the audience, and he came to our attention because of Facebook and his, some of the posts his mom had, but you're six now, right? So, he's sitting over there in the audience. You know, there was some back and forth related to our construction as it was going on, but Braxton apparently is into construction, and he, it inspired him, and so, you know, we have a picture, I guess you're trying to do the flagging operation, and you're doing some ground, ground maintenance there, but there's a picture of Braxton at work. So, we found that touching, so it was kinda neat. So, as I said, six years old, just finished kindergarten, all right, so it'll be a couple years before you're doing, if I were a mayor, and I come see you in fourth grade, hopefully. He'll be at Hampstead Elementary this fall. So, he's a big brother, loves playing baseball, good man, and loves any type of construction. So, and I've got a grandson who's like that, any type of construction, so that's, that's kinda cool, trying to figure out how things are made and how things run. And almost any time he sees a construction site, he's out and about, and he comes home and basically recreates it. So, there you go. He was recreating our project with everything going on, with the, with the flagging operation, and which side of the road you go up, which side you're going down. and which side of the road you go up, which side you're going down. I like the alternating red and blue. Looks like beanbags. If you borrow somebody's cornhole game, shocking. So good creativity. So we thought it'd be neat to just thank Braxton for his interest and, and make him a junior partner in our revitalization project on the town of Hampstead, so we're presenting him. Come on up here, Braxton.
He's so sticky.
Get that.
Right there, in the middle, and I'll get down to your left.
Christie, you should be part of that.
If you don't mind. Here you go. So we got the Town of Hampstead Junior Partner Board presented to Braxton Galley. We are grateful for your inspiration during our Main Street Revitalization Project. The road to success is always under construction. I signed it, our town manager, Ms. Tammy Leslie, signed it, and this column's behind Jim, it's signed. So you want to hold on to that a sec? And we'll look at Jim, smile.
[laughing]
So good job, and here. We've got a little something for you.
Nice.
So, so there you go. CJ Miller giving you your own hard hat.
Wow.
And a few other things, dump trucks, I think you got a vest.
Oh, you got a vest and everything.
Towel. So CJ Miller really sets you up good. And if you get really, because you're working hard, and if you get hungry, they give you some milk chocolate. And then if you get stressed, you can just squeeze on the floor. Right? So lots of stuff. So here, you got, I'll just take it back to you.
Yeah.
Good job.
You're definitely special when you get a dump truck from CJ Miller.
That is so cute.
Thanks to Christie for catching that. Oh, we'll give you the, we'll give you the picture, picture, too. Or you already posted that, right? So you have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we'll keep. Yeah, that's pretty cool. So I love the way these young minds think. So it's, it's just neat to see. All right, ordinances and resolutions. We have the adoption of ordinance 541, which is the uses and conditions in the historic district that we had that ever-so-brief public hearing about.
That is the amendment I was talking about. I'm sorry, I was in the wrong place.
Well, first, we have to make a motion to adopt ordinance 541.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 541.
Second, then second by Dave. Comment, Tammy?
As we continued to review the ordinance that we introduced, we were thinking about historic revolves around the principal structure. So we wanted to add, if you look at the second document that we gave you, we wanted to add a, another required condition. It's under what will be 135-44F, so it's in purple.
Oh, I'm, okay.
Are you in the?
Yep.
So we wanted to say, any property zoned historic where the principal structure on the property is fully demolished may be rezoned to another zoning district as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by the town council.
What page?
I don't know, there's no page numbers. It should be your second document.
Fourth page in.
Thank you.
Other documents.
There it is, thank you.
Can't miss it. It's purple.
It's purple. Well, red, red is for what's being deleted, green's for what's being added, so.
Good thing nobody's colorblind up here, at least as far as I know. Certainly a rainbow. So.
Makes it easier.
So to make that change, we need to amend ordinance 541.
So make a motion to amend ordinance 541 with the planning and zoning recommendations.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? We need to vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Going to get there for you. Wayne is an owner of an historic property, so he'll abstain. All right, and then on the overall, as amended ordinance 541, we've made a motion in a second, and we've amended it. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 541?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
And Wayne has abstained.
No, did we have to make a motion? We didn't make a motion. We could just vote?
No, we did make a motion.
You made a motion to amend it.
No, we made a motion to adopt it, then we made a motion to amend it, then we passed the amendment, then we passed the.
Okay, so you don't have to make a motion to adopt the amended.
Yeah, we did.
We just did.
I did it, we just did two votes.
Sorry, listen to the bench.
No, never mind, okay. I missed the last one.
Phew, I was up on my parliamentary game.
I know, it's running too fast.
See, Galen, if you get out of construction and you get into this side of the business, parliamentary procedure, you got to take that course. It's very, it'll serve you well. All right, any public comments? There's, you know, it's July, and people aren't here, and it's 90 degrees outside, and I don't blame them, they're out there doing something else, or hopefully watching us on TV at some point.
Shark Week.
I'm in snowballs in downtown Hampstead.
Okay, yeah, they're at the Snowball Stand, or Hoffman's, or Outlaw Barbecue, or at the food trucks, or the fire department. All right, so no public comment. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all. See you in August.